Welcome to the board meeting for the Board of Education for the month of October 2017. Call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Bobby, roll call, please.
Jessica Mead.
Here.
Andy Mary. Noel Deeb.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Present.
Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Danielle Youska.
Yes.
J.D. Schrader.
Here.
Jeannie Long.
Here.
And Mike Boldy.
Here.
And also here tonight are our two new student representatives to the board, Erica Heinsohn and Jack Bond. All of them. I think Jack is familiar with our secretary, so we'll leave that one alone. But welcome. We're not going to put you on the spot tonight. This is all kind of nudity and stuff, so I think if you guys just want to sit back and observe, when you get a little more involved in the board stuff, we're going to call on you at meetings just to give us a rundown of what's going on in this building and stuff, any events, and you'll be part of the discussions as well. So the only caveat I throw on this is you can't vote. So other than that, welcome, or hope you're an active participant. So thank you for wanting to be part of the operation. Appreciate it. Let us go on to the consent agenda. Be looking for a motion, please. Don't fight over it, everybody.
I move the board approve the minutes of the September 25, 2017 Board of Education meeting. Financial report for September 2017. Checks number 8077 through 8185 in the amount of $179,403.80. ACH number 17180356 through 17180397 in the amount of $901,008.77. And a wire transfer in the amount of $23,860.3 for a total of $1,104,475.60.
Okay, so Dr. Deeb, second from Ms. Mead. I assume everyone has had, the board has had the opportunity to review all the documents? Any discussion on them? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Okay.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Public comment? And if I can see from here, it doesn't look like we have that. Good enough. Let's see. Student representative report? You're here. That works for me. Like I said, we'll keep you out of the book. New business. Committee of the whole. You guys will have to take, because my mouse ain't working, because I'm just not bringing that down. Come on. All righty. Be looking. Here, I'll look over your shoulder.
I move the board approve the minutes for the committee of the whole meeting dated October 10, 2017.
Second.
Second.
Lot more seconds.
Well, you got to do a very good vote. The motion by Dr. Deeb, second by Mr. Pyatt. You've had a chance to look at that, and you're all part of it. Any questions, comments? Hearing none? Motion to approve those minutes is made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Six A, 2017-2018 budget amendment slash adoption. Looking for a motion then, please.
I move the, I move we approve the fiscal year 2018 budget estimate, including $30,175,206 in revenues from all sources and for all funds, expenditures of $31,97,313 in all funds, including the use of carryover and the use of the fund balances.
Oh, for a second.
Okay, motion by Dr. McKenna, second by Ms. Youska. Any discussion on the budget information?
Tim, do we, if we get down there later on the agenda and decide that we don't want to do a revenue, we don't want to do a energy exemption thing and decide we want to do fund balance to do north and east, does, do we have to go back and change this? Do we want to take that money out of fund balance? Is that?
Danny asked me this question earlier. Act 32, the energy exemption, has to be, you would have to make resolution by October 1.
Right, so we can't. But what if we just wanted?
To affect this year's budget. So if, if the board would choose to increase the amount of fund balance we're going to spend this fiscal year, we would have to amend that prior to those expenditures. So we could do that in November, December, or any other point before June 30.
Any other questions on the budget documentation?
What's the main change?
Okay, so if the, if the board members would like to, to open the October budget changes, that pretty much summarizes the budget adoption information and really drills down and looks at where the changes are coming from. Now, the bulk of our changes are going to be in salary and benefits. So if you look at the budget amendment document, you'll see changes listed by function area. And these changes really happen in that salary and benefit budget. What's going on if you look at this document, we're looking at open enrollment. So, you know, the revenue limit formula is driven by enrollment. We know our enrollment is down. We mentioned in September that our enrollment in numbers are down slightly, and our enrollment out numbers are also down. And all of those have an impact on the budget. So the first line there, that open enrollment number, that's the aid that we receive from other districts or students that are attending our district from outside. Now, we talked about the revenue limit formula, and it's really made up of the tax levy and general, or state aid payments. And on the top revenues there, we've got equalization aid payment, we've got poverty aid and computer aid, and those, all three of those are part of the aid payment under the revenue limit. And you can look at the differences there. We know that our state, our general aid from the equalization aid coming off the revenue limit is down from the state over the July 1 estimate, and that's reflected in the $92,000 there that's shown. The revenue limit formula, as I said, is state aids and taxation. So if state aids are down, local taxes are going to go up, and that's reflected in the, in the tax levy number there of $521,572. We also know that part of that number is because we get a declining enrollment exemption. And as we lose more students, that exemption number is greater for one year. So that's why that $521,000 is a pretty large number. It also includes the voucher payments that are going to be due for the parochial schools. And it, and later, as you see in the tax levy report, we're increasing the, our local taxes by $301,200, and that's also included in that number.
How much, so it's $300,000 or giving it a piece to St. John's?
We're giving it to P students.
Just $300,000 of them?
Correct.
As, as required.
Right, right.
Okay, so I, I think that the changes that I'd like to point out, so we know that we've got some revenue changes there. The total impact on the budget, including the voucher program, is $478,479. There's a couple areas that, because we have fewer students going out, that means that portion of our tuition payment is also going to be less. So that's a smaller expense. So between the declining enrollment exemption and changes within the budget, when you look at the expense changes down below, there's a couple I'd really like to highlight. We look at open enrollment. We've already talked about that number is less because we have less going out, but more because we're making the payment to P students. We've added to the professional development budget $85,994. We've also increased Jake's maintenance and remodeling budget by $100,000. We had an error in the billing for our new hosted phone system, and it was installed last year, and we completed the installation in August of 2016. We thought we were paying the bill. Frontier thought we were paying the bill. We got a notice two weeks ago that says we never paid the bill. And that was an impact after E-rate of a little over $30,000. So on the revenue side, on the top, you'll see $12,500. That's the E-rate portion of it, and we've increased Mark's budget to cover the cost of that additional build-up yield. So in simple terms, that's the changes to the budget. When we look down at Fund 27 on that document, we had a partial replacement of two special ed teachers at the high school. And those savings in the salary staff result in less expenses in Fund 27, which lowers the inter-fund transfer, so all of that's documented. So that $43,057 is a part of those staffing changes.
How much is the, does the amount that goes to the P students, the full amount that we would receive from the state, or do we keep some?
The full amount, what was to. What we tax, so we tax it, and then the state deducts that from our aid.
What is our normal amount per student from the state? $9,200 or?
$9,275 plus the exemption.
Okay, so that whole $9,275 goes to P's?
No. Open enrollment is, it's approximately $7,500 per student, approximately.
So it's the same as if they opened enrollment to WIPR, roughly?
It's within $500 of that, yep. But we don't get to count those students for aid purposes. So it has, we essentially get taxed for them.
And we also don't, and there's also not a, you know, for each student that we, it's $10,000, you know, we get about $6,000 from the state, you know, in terms of state aids. And there's no state aids in that. That's all a full, that's fully levied by the community.
By the local taxpayers?
Yes.
By the local taxpayers.
So it's even?
First.
Yes.
Okay, if you looked at the motion, you noticed that the revenues are less than the expenses. And the only thing, if you look at the documents, and we don't need to open it now, but if you look at the budget summary detail, on the last page, it talks about, when you look at the motion, it says that it includes the use of fund balance and carryover. And on the last page of that budget summary detail, on the very bottom, it talks about, I believe the number is $922,107. So we're using $600,000 for fund balance. We're using, the rest is from carryover from program, grant programs like CJGR, as well as donations that we receive. And that, so we're using that then to provide an amended balance budget.
Is the $600,000 what we used for remodeling?
Correct. So if individual board members have, particularly the, the budget adoption worksheet, that's a pretty detailed worksheet. I'd be happy to go through that with, with individual members if they like. The bubble, the budget publication document is, we're required by statute, within 10 days of this meeting, to publish that document. So you will see that in the annual journal.
Any other questions or discussions on budget?
With the, with the, what we publish, so it lists the, it does list the fund balance. Does it, are we required to publish it exactly in this form?
Correct.
Okay. So like, because it doesn't always clarify what is actually a fund balance that is available funds, and what is fund balance that really is not truly available because it's already been pre-allocated for, as a retirement or other, not retirement, but other?
Or each already held insurance.
Yes, thank you.
Could you just add an extra little add under the paper and break it down that way? Give them, give them in a moment, then, or is that not something you're interested in?
No, no, it is, I mean, in a way, it's, I think it's confusing because I think people think fund balance is fully out, you know?
They think that's what you've got?
Yeah, they think that's what's available, either in cash flows or available cash, but it's not true.
So what we did in my last district is we could have Tim do something in the newsletter that just came out, we could have in the next one where there would be a little explanation in sort of layperson terms about what the fund balance is. Tim, do you think that's something we could?
Sure.
But I, but I think you're right. I think that's, it's hard for people to grasp.
It's like a minute and a half, right?
That people think we have.
Well, the fund balance includes your assets, and sometimes your assets isn't necessarily cash flow.
Right.
We'll have a little discussion further on another item where we can talk about that a little bit. Any other discussion on the motion?
2018 budget. Bobby, let's do roll call, please.
Noel Deeb.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Youska.
Yes.
J.D. Schrader.
Yes.
Jeannie Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
And Mike Boldy.
Yes.
There's not that many chances in life where you spend $30 million and?
All righty, let's go on to Item B, the 2017-2018 tax levy.
I move the board approve a tax levy of $8,000, or $8,517,186, with an estimated mill rate of $7.00 per 1,000, a low assessed value.
Motion from Ms. Youska, second from Ms. Long. Any discussion?
Mike, if the board members would just briefly open up the, the document that's labeled Tax Levy 2017-18 Final. And in the budget presentation, I went over this document, and I'd like you to look at the first yellow column that's titled Actual 2017-18 Levy. And you can see there, we've broken down the general fund levy, and then Fund 38 Prior Service Loan, that's the loan that we paid for the Wisconsin Tyro, resystem for the prior obligation. We've got six years left on that loan payment, and then you see the levy for $270,000 for the community service fund. As you can see on the document, we've got equalized valuations listed there. We're, we're up about 1.8% in equalized values, and you can see the reduction of approximately 25 cents on the mill rate. And then I have a footnote there that shows the impact of the private school voucher payment of $301,200 is 28 cents on the mill rate. Then the second document, the reason why I provided?
So you're saying we'd be down 28 cents more without that?
Correct, correct. The second document, and I know if you can hit your plus arrow, your plus button on your browser, and I'd like you to, I know it's a tremendous amount of information, but what's important in this document is we've got municipalities listed on, listed on the far left. And then we've got, if you look at percentage of the total, is the middle column, and that's carried out to multiple digits. And what's interesting is if you look, and let's just use the city of Anago. If you look at the city of Anago last year, they represented 31.7% of the equalized value, so that's how big that municipality is. Their valuation dropped two percentage points this year.
Hold on, Tim, you got that up for it? They were 31% in 2017 and 33% in 2016?
So that's why they dropped two percent.
They, they dropped two percent. And if you look at that impact, you can see they're going down 7%. They're going down 7%. If you look at, now take the town of Anago, and you look at their percentage, they went from 8.86 to 9.73. And look at what they're going up, 8.3%. So the total is going to go down on an average, on the bottom there, 1.32%, but individual municipalities, depending on why their valuation went up or down, you can see by the numbers, you know, and look at your own municipality and see how you fare. And your taxpayers, some of them may ask you, when you said the tax, the mill rate is supposed to go down, might went up. This explains why.
So can you roughly come, I remember making you explain this to me last year in the earlier, we got, can you explain to, just how the value thing works a little bit?
Okay, so this document, if you look at the footnote, it's from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, as of October 1 valuation. So my understanding of the document is they're, they're looking at rates of appraisal and home values, and those home values tend to be determined by home sales. So it's, you know, are your, your values of your properties in your local municipality going up or down? And then it's that total valuation of that municipality relative to the rest of municipalities in the school district.
So realistically, in the town of Anago and the town of Norwood, both saw some slight increases in their property amounts, based on the fact that they're actually up on the rate?
According to the Department of Revenue, yes.
And this is their figures, not yours?
Correct.
Okay.
And we will send them their tax bills based on these figures.
Based on these numbers?
Correct.
Does that clarify it for everyone? Any other questions, Tim, on the tax levy? Any other comments? Hearing none? Bobby, let's do roll call, please.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Youska.
Yes.
J.D. Schrader.
Yes.
Jeannie Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Noel Deeb.
Yes.
And Mike Boldy.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item C, youth options. All of these are at NTC.
What happens in the critical thinking course?
Pardon me?
Do you know anything about the critical thinking course? Looks fairly popular.
Yeah, it is a, from what I understand, a pretty common course that's required in many of their programs. So it's probably, it's something we've considered for possible dual credit here. But it's geared more towards workplace situations, how to work together, teamwork, that type of thing. There's really nothing to adopt on this one, it's just for notification.
You, you normally approve those?
Yeah.
You were taking action to?
But isn't there a dollar amount attached to this at the bottom?
Usually.
There's a dollar amount for each student.
Yeah, total dollar amount is $6,021.60.
Is that approved?
So it doesn't look like you have a statement for approval, but you're approving the 2017-18.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Deeb, second from Ms. Youska, to approve the youth applicant, youth options application list for spring of 2018 for the students that have total costs of $6,021.60.
Correct.
So, any, any discussion on that? Bobby, let's do roll call.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Youska.
Yes.
J.D. Schrader.
Yes.
Jeannie Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Noel Deeb.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
And Mike Boldy.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for, Dr. Deeb, for putting me in line. All righty, let's go on to Item B, line of credit commitment.
I move the board adopt resolution 2017-4 authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $600,000 in accordance with Section 67.128A1 of the Wisconsin statutes, and accept the terms of commitment as provided by Covantage Credit Union.
Did we use our one from last year, Tim?
Last year we did not.
The motion was by Dr. McKenna and second by Mr. Pyatt, so. Tim, go ahead.
Okay, our payroll, first of all, I guess if you open up the rate comparison worksheet, our, our average payroll runs with, with both federal and state taxes and everything that's due, is somewhere in the neighborhood of about $550,000 every two weeks. And so when we look at our cash flow, I just feel we've, when we pass the original budget, I talk about fund balance, and we talk about maintaining at least $500,000 for emergencies. When we look at November, before we start getting tax receipts in December and January, we get down to the point where we're going to be close. This year, we're probably going to be within, and depending on the timing of board bills and primarily Jake's expenditures, we'll be getting very close. So I, I think it's prudent to maintain cash availability of at least $500,000 in the event, because something would go wrong, and even if we don't tap into it, we at least have the funds available. So in the, in the comparison sheet, the letters of commitment that we received, we received two. We received from Covantage Credit Union and Huntington National Bank. They list them, one lists them out and references the Wall Street Journal prime rate, and the other lists LIBOR. And so I've converted those to an average daily down on the bottom there, effective daily rate. And if you look at the closing costs, there's a significant difference between Covantage and Huntington. And then, you know, if you've got a line, a line of credit of $600,000, if any time you borrow less than $325,000, Covantage Credit Union's terms are better. If you borrow longer than that term, then Huntington's better. And, you know, we're likely to be, in December, we'd be into it for about a week, and then again in May, there's a possibility that we'd be into it for a week or two. So it just seems that both terms are very competitive, but I just think, it appears that Covantage is giving us a lower closing cost. I think the thing to note is if you look at the, the prior year Wall Street Journal prime rate, it's up almost a point. So interest is rising.
Any other questions?
Danielle Youska.
Yes.
J.D. Schrader.
Yes.
Jeannie Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Noel Deeb.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
And Mike Boldy.
Yes.
One final comment. Bobby's got documents for the board members to sign. It would be helpful if we could get those signed before the cabinet meeting. We will take care of it. Thank you, Tim. Item E, audit services.
I move the board approve a three-year agreement for audit services and preparation of financial statements from Schenck, ExVee for an all-inclusive price of $15,000 in fiscal year 18, $15,225 in fiscal year 18, and $15,500 in fiscal year 2020.
Second. Motion from Ms. Youska, second from Dr. McKenna. Any discussion?
Are they, is this who did it last year?
Correct.
I just noticed they were the cheapest. And just noticed they were the cheapest, that's why you picked them?
Yeah, I think switching auditors is, at least the business office is a big job. And Schenck has done it for, I think, two, three-year terms at least. Last year, I talked to the board at Operations Committee back in April or May, that we were, our three-year agreement was over. And I asked if I could just extend it in the board, the Operations Committee suggested that we put it out for bid, and then they would review whether or not to switch or not. And Schenck provided the lowest bid.
What is a membership audit?
Usually, and Kelly can probably explain, but after the January 2nd Friday, the, I think 25% of all the districts automatically get randomly selected for a membership audit, because so much aid is based on your student enrollment, they want to provide those numbers.
You can also be selected if you have errors in your student count. So business managers like secretaries to have that from each building very accurate, so that we get selected for that as well.
And JD, I think too, Schenck has been doing, and Tim, this is my ninth year on the board, and Schenck has been doing the audit every year that I've been on the board, so very reliable for, give us a very straightforward, very, very evaluation, so.
I do Schenck in my last district, too, very satisfied with that.
Any other discussion or questions?
What does a single audit mean?
When you, and I, I think the threshold for federal dollars is $750,000, and when you exceed that level of federal aid, the federal government requires what they call is a single audit. So they come in and they randomly audit target certain federal programs, and they come in and audit those in addition to your regular state required audit.
So only if we get targeted and they include it?
Because we're over $750,000, we include that every year.
Oh.
As part of the regular season.
But do we get audited like that?
We've already incorporated that cost into their, yes, or the... Anyone else?
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Ann, Mike Golding?
On to item F, revenue limit, revenue limit exemption for energy efficiencies related to North and East Elementary HVAC projects.
Want to dive into that one, Tim?
Sure, there are a couple of documents there, and I think what we'll do, first of all, the 662.3 fund balance, it's just our board policy and fund balance. And in a nutshell, it says that we're going to try to maintain a fund balance between 10, 10 and 15 percent. When we get to the fund balance projection, we'll talk a little bit about that. PI 15, that's basically DPI's chapter on how requirements, the statutory requirements for doing Act 32 money, you've probably heard of Act 32 at some of your trainings. And that's really the statute that, as of January 1, number one of year rule. So I guess my first comment would be, Act 32 was developed primarily for districts similar to Anago that were not able to raise sufficient funds to take care of specifically energy-related projects. They didn't have the money to do it. Act 32 is being taken away in January because districts were not transparent with their community, and they took advantage of the program, and the legislature viewed it as abused the program. So it will no longer be available after January. So let's take a look at that fund balance projection. So to Patrick's point earlier, this is a document that you've seen as part of the budget presentation. And when we look at the document, we, we start out with $6,210,000 as a beginning fund balance. That non-spendable amount, that $275,000, was a health insurance premium that was due. The restrictive balance of $1,152,000 is what Patrick was referring to, our obligation for our liability under the HRA. So that is in a segregated account, and we can't use it for cash flow purposes. The $219,000 are dollars that are carryover for grants, and we can use them for grant payment, or grant activities. And at times, you know, we can, I mean, they're obligated to grants. They're, they're sitting in, certainly in our accounts, but they're, it's really not available for cash flow purposes. It's paying a specific purpose for grants. So really, when you look at that, we're looking at the unassigned cash flow and the emergency money that we targeted at 500,000. And so what I want to do on the bottom there, I've carried that forward, and just said if, if we do like right now, we're assuming that we're going to spend $600,000 this year for energy projects at, I think it's East would be an example. That's where our fund balance for really cash flow purposes will be, it'll be at 3.3 million $568,000 next July 1. And when we look at that relative to our all-funds expenditures, we're down to about 12% of our expenses. And then if we would take another $600,000 out, we'd be at just shy of 10%. So I would be comfortable if the board said, let's go ahead and proceed down that road if we took any unexpended funds at the end of the year and targeted it for rebuilding of the fund balance. Because at some point, we're going to need to go back to our community and request funds, and it will affect our interest rate if we continue to be taking all the fund balance. In terms of what I know at this point, and I, I certainly, Kelly probably can chime into what, but I know at this point with the governor's, with the governor's budget, the information that was in there, I think it's, is it Act 59, is that the number? After, if the board can take action between now and the December board meeting to move forward with an energy exemption Friday. What we would have to do at, between now and then, we would have to do an RFP for performance contracting services. We would have to, depending on the level of, we would borrow, we would have to allow a 30-day petition period. And then we would have to negotiate a contract. And then you'd have to pass a resolution, and you'd have to do that between now and the December board meeting.
So what's the October deadline that you were talking about earlier?
The October deadline is if we were going to do it for this budget year, this fiscal year, you'd have to have passed that resolution by October 1st.
But we don't have to, there's not a explicit reason why we would need to do that, is that right?
Well, we would be doing it for the year ahead now.
For the year ahead, so.
But it would need to be done by December to knock it veto away?
It's doable, it's doable to do it by then. You know, the one thing to think about for your fund balance, when you look at that just under 12%, just under 10%, I mean, I've always operated under the, kind of the recommended 20 to 25% is a healthy fund balance. So to be low double digits is, is concerning, you really don't want to drop below that. So it is an option for us to do it this way, to use this exemption, and I, I would echo what Tim said, it is, it was set up for districts like ours to be able to use it. I think in the fact that you have the capacity to use it for more than those two HVAC, and the fact that you're going to potentially target just those two projects is certainly not in abuse of that option that you have available to you. So it's something that we, we can do by the end of December. It is something that, you know, I think we would want to talk about when we have our November meeting, for people to understand that it's sort of a minimum input into those each new buildings ahead of some conversation down the road with the community about what they, what they want to have happen in terms of buildings once we are in and used to our consolidated approach with the three schools in town.
How much do we raise the price with the, like, because we know it costs $600,000 to get it done at West, but when we have to go through the, what do they call them, the hoops, how much are we adding on?
Well, there's two ways of looking at it. We had, I was in a meeting on, last Friday, and we know that the margins for homeless contractors tend to be in that mid-30 range, 30% of the project. So could we take a $600,000 project and get close to $1 million? We probably will. The, you know, when we look at our aid estimate, our general aid estimate, we're comparing what Anago spends to the rest of the state of Wisconsin, because there's really a fixed pot of money. And why our July aid payment, our aid estimate is different than what happens in October? One of the reasons is districts are using this energy exemption, and they're, they're essentially outspending us so that our percentage per student looks smaller and we get a little bit less aid. We have to remember that, we're tertiary aided, and I think we're aided somewhere in the neighborhood of about 23.5%. So the aid that we would generate would help offset, if you look at it, is help offsetting the costs of the performance contracting. I think this is a small enough project, if we looked at, one option would be to sleeve things for this year as it is, and possibly enter into an agreement for the last project debt. And it also allows us to manage our tax levy, because we know we have declining enrollment exemption dropping off. It would allow us to, at one point, add that to the levy and keep it from declining, and then possibly looking a year or two down the road at what that would set us up for for something else.
How many years can you pay that over? Do you have to take the whole million in a year, or is it like?
My recommendation, once we nail down the cost, would be if the number is small enough to do it to levy it in one year.
But we could levy more than one year.
What's the benefit, what's the benefit of two years versus one? Or three years, something?
We would, it would depend on how the draws, I would think, on the project would go. If we could have them go over two fiscal years, otherwise we would have to, I'm not exactly sure how we would, you know, a promissory note is typically, maybe we would do a five-year promissory note, typically they're 10 years, and then bonding is usually 20. You know, this, what I'm proposing is certainly a small number.
And, and you're suggesting just, if we did this, just one of the schools and not allocate, not trying to allocate for both of the schools to do this, and continue to spend from the fund balance in the manner we're planning?
Correct. And the reason I do that, Patrick, is Jake's been kind of going along those lines, he's been working with the engineer that designed the project last year, they're doing a what, a final walk through, what, in a week or two? And they're going to be tweaking, they're going to be tweaking the bid documents, and we know that we've got our lowest possible cost, because, you know, we've got one building in, we, we know what that looks like, Jake is managing the project, and it's very efficient to do it.
Can you ask the guy, can this same company bid for a performance contractor, or is he automatically excluded by some sort of lobby?
CSATEN did our facilities study a couple of years ago, and I had a conversation with Dr. Tim that I'd like to have a conversation between her and I, and possibly Jake, and Charlie Schneider, for those of you who are on the board, Charlie did the presentation. They got kicked out of being a performance contractor, because they're kind of a, they're a public entity that was doing performance contracting against private firms. I would like to have a conversation with Charlie. Charlie has suggested he'd be willing to walk us through the process in very short order, and he'd be willing to do that for a minimal fee. And review the RFP, we talked about working with local contractors to get them approved as a performance contractor, and helping us with this whole process. We've had other vendors talk to us, Nexus is doing a lot of work in the neighboring schools, to the tune of 40 or 50 million dollars over the next two or three years. They've been after us to try to do something, so there's people out there that can assist us if the board is interested, and I don't think we would, I mean, time would be in the essence, I think we, the board would have to direct us to look at that, and then I think if we are, if the direction would be to have some public comment at the next roundtable session, we'd have to move pretty quickly. Or the alternative is that if we go down this road and we do another $600,000, we direct all expended funds back to the budget, back to the fund balance until we build it back up to 15%.
How long you think that would take?
We face budget cuts every year, so that's complicated.
You know, it will take a while.
I mean, I think we should proceed in, you know, I mean, it's very limited scope, it's one school, it's consistent with our plans, and, and it really is required to be
Let me ask you this, you want to take a little more for the middle school?
You know, I think energy, you know, it's very clearly in the scope to say, this, you know, heating HVAC is energy, I mean, yes, but I think, you know, like, this is energy-based funds, it's very clear that this is what it's for, we're not abusing it. I think it's very responsible. I mean, yes, but I think that I would, I would just stick with this scope.
If I can add, there's no question that these are have-to-do kinds of projects, so nobody could come in and tell you these are nice-to-have kinds of things, it's essential, and, and they will be paid for in one way or the other, so I think that makes it as transparent as can be as well. You know, there's no, all this would be nice-to-have about it, it's, we're going to have to do it.
Do you think it's cheaper, or is that something to investigate more, is to do the first process you were talking, so I would assume you meant the guy from CSATEN would help our contractor we have, who already did the first two, get certified to be a performance contractor for the third one?
He may help that contractor, our other local contractors.
Do we have the money in the fund balance that we can do in both this year, if we did this, instead of spacing it out, both, if we did do that?
It just gets us quicker down to that 9, yeah.
11, 9, 20.
Exactly.
We've got to be volunteering Jake's time, nobody does.
That's right.
JD, just to make sure that we understood you correctly, were you asking if we did performance contracting, if we could do them both in one year?
Oh, I, no, I was saying if we did fund balance, if we could do them both in one year, but I guess I'll take your question also.
Well, I, I guess, you know, that would be...
I'm just thinking it's one more year where the kids have cravat air, you know, and don't know if we could be faster.
Yeah.
No, I, I agree with you, I think it could be done, I think both projects could be done in one year, either way you look at it. But obviously, time is always at the essence, especially when you're trying to plan two projects one summer and the other fall.
So is it extra confusing if you do, if you do them both this summer, and you do one with fund balance and the other with this performance contract, or is it not even possible to do the one this summer with performance contracting?
It's not possible because we passed that rule.
Yes, okay.
Right.
But you know, as, as we're talking, I know it would be a lot to do both this summer, but the following summer, we're going to be transitioning all these elementary schools into the city. So what would be easier, doing them both this summer, or doing one next summer with the transition? I don't know, something to think about when you're playing, because your plane's going to be pretty full.
A lot of desks, of course, Jake.
Of course, if we do take it...
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't venture to say that one would be easier than the other. I would certainly say that the sooner that direction is given, regardless of the choice, would be much needed, Tim.
One, the other aspect of this which really comes up though, is the fund balance and dipping lower, you know, if we use the, if we use the exemption, it kind of splits, you know, it splits the, we're not going to use the exemption for both, we're already kind of partway through. We're already kind of partway through. We'll get one school done. But then we'll also be able to preserve some of the fund balance, which will preserve, you know, our credit rating a little bit better, and that's where.
Yeah, which is, Patrick, a, a good point, because if we take that number down too far, and we do have to, when we just passed earlier regarding that, that $600,000, that interest rate could pop up very quickly. And then we're playing, so.
Like, get the consensus.
So we're almost forced to do these separately, not together.
You mean in timing, Danny?
Yes, yeah. Originally, when I put this together, Danny, I was thinking of, and this is prior to talking to Jake, really. I was thinking, you could shift $600,000 that he had designated for the HVAC project and shift it to the middle school for this summer's work. But in hindsight, thinking about that, that doesn't give Jake very little time to get his ducks in the row, to do $600,000 in the work at the middle school. I mean, that, that would be major engineering and planning. There's just not enough planning. Anything, when you're, when you're planning a construction project where your window of opportunity is, maybe you're a three-month window or a six-month window, but that window is moving. We're fixed. You know, you got the last day of school or the first day of school. So it's not like adding on to a business or something else. He's got a very narrow window to get all of his planning done. And I just didn't think about that when I was putting this together. He reminded me of it this morning.
So you're paying it forward.
So I guess, are we in agreement then that we keep the project separate? Give Tim some direction that need to work with Mr. Schneider as far as that side?
Colleen, are you comfortable with that, or do you wanna talk with both, both parties?
I want to talk with the cheaper one.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
So then, should the board okay with pursuing along those lines?
Yes.
We don't need a jury. Yeah.
I think at this point, we haven't entered into any, any type of expenditures, so.
No, so I think if we just give you the direction at this point to start those conversations and then come back to us next month with something.
Colleen, can we take this up, that committee, the board, we need to?
We definitely can. Bring an update at the committee, and then I wanna, you know, include that as part of our update when we have that discussion at the middle school above. You know, some of the projects that are gonna happen are just as part of the facilities. But I just, I want us to be careful that we're as transparent as possible about this action. Again, it's needed. There's no question about it, and it's how low we run the, the fund balance and, and put ourselves in a precarious position that way. So I think it is a good balanced approach in terms of being a good steward. Just wanna make sure that our community is tracking with us on that.
Great.
Because you don't wanna go lower than your policy states 10%, because then you're breaking your own policy.
Well, the policy says, the policy says you intend to keep it above 10%, not you must keep it above 10%.
Yeah, the policy does state that there's a bit of flexibility into it, but really.
You ought to be thoughtful in your choice to go.
But then that's a pretty shared responsibility. It's, we are not in a courtroom trying to undo the merits of that. It's what you think is right, what has been worth the bore.
Yeah, to Dr. Tim's point from earlier, yeah, usually if you talk to a company, they want you to keep your fund balance at 10%.
If you read the auditor's letter to the board, he's reaching 25%.
All right, you guys are good to go with that? All right. Thank you. Let us jump on to item G, Sage AGR goals.
And we're actually gonna have you table that and come back. We have some administrators working. Our reports will go over to you in November.
Okay. We'll table that today. You'll learn the meaning if that's okay. All righty, then we will jump on to item H, concussion protocol.
So, Dr. McKeon, you've had some input into this and working with our school nurse to make sure that we stay up to speed on protocol to protect the safety of our students and provide treatment and care afterward.
Darlene, our school nurse, she's excellent. She has a ton of experience, and she realized that during the process of, or through the course of last year, that there would be students who would sustain concussions, weren't necessarily athletes, and it was kind of a gray area. Although, of course, all student athletes receive the impact testing, and there's a pretty clear protocol. It's run kind of in conjunction with athletic, you know, the athletic trainers and, and kind of getting students back. But students who sustain a concussion outside of sports and aren't, and don't have the impact testing, there wasn't a clear protocol. So Darlene worked on it. She looked at other districts. And actually, there wasn't a lot in other districts either, so we kind of had to come up with a, a protocol that, that kind of meets the, the gaps that we had for those students that weren't athletes but had concussions and still had gym class and things, and we didn't know exactly how to approach it. So this is the, this is the, what she came up with, what we came up with. We talked about it, and she actually presented and got feedback from the providers at the clinic as well prior to, prior to writing this. But I think it's pretty reasonable. It, it looks wordy, but Darlene's got, she understands it very clearly. It's pretty clearly laid out. You have students sustain, essentially, if students sustain a concussion, that there's a way for them to kind of get back into an appropriate sort of physical, you know, physical education and other activities, sort of regimen, even if they don't go to their doctor to get cleared. So that was kind of the rub. Some of the students weren't necessarily going in, which, you know, it's, there are a variety of reasons why that happened. So, so it kind of splits the, the difference in that, making sure that we kind of follow a protocol similar to the, what the athletic trainers already do, minus the impact testing. So that's the protocol. I would also, just something as a board, I thought that may be nice. I know that impact testing obviously has a certain cost. It may be nice. I suspect there'd be some parents whose children aren't athletes would gladly pay for that testing at the, you know, at the beginning of high school. And I don't know if that's offered, or if that would be possible for it to be offered, you know, if parents were willing to pay for that. I thought it might be a nice thing. I know that if my kids didn't do sports, but I would still want them to have that impact testing, because I think it's a pretty useful measure. I don't know if that's something we could offer.
Is, is there anything you talked with Darlene about?
We met, I did discuss with her and said, you know, I thought that'd be a nice thing if we did.
Okay, well, we can make a note of that, correct?
Yeah, just, and that's just a side note for that.
I just saw the proposal came to the Community Health Foundation from the athletics side, and I don't know if they asked for like $500 or something to help fund the concussion testing for the athletes, so it must not be that much money.
And that may not be the impact testing. I think that maybe, I'm not sure exactly what that is, if that's the work that, like, Sandy Robert does with the students, like, when they're, when she's trying to get them back in.
Are you thinking just about high school, it was? That have access to the impact test?
Yeah, or when do we make access for?
Middle school students.
Middle school would be great. Yeah, that'd be awesome.
That'd be excellent. What about one and a half-year-olds? My kid falls down.
You know, I wonder about that. We do have a lot of research on, like, little kids and how. They, they seem a lot closer to the ground.
So Patrick, if I read this point number four, so if the medical clearance is not received, then are we looking into why? Rather, it almost looks like if the, if the doctor does not clear them.
No, that's if, that's if the student doesn't, typically, isn't going to the doctor. So if they go to the doctor, the doctor will, I mean, we, I mean, we always say, you know, yes or no, I mean, and kind of say that. So that's what that's saying. It's not saying, if the doctor disagrees with you, we'll do this opposite thing. It's not saying that. It's saying if the student doesn't, it doesn't say it directly, but if the student doesn't go to the doctor, that's when that kicks in. Or if, for some reason, the student says they went to the doctor, but there's, you know, we asked for the information, we don't get it. That's, you know, did the student go to the doctor or not? I mean, that's protected health information, you know what I mean? So it's kind of a, it's kind of a ground, like, if we don't get information back. If the student said, well, I went to a doctor in Rhineland, or, you know, and they cleared me, but we can't get that information, they probably didn't go to that doctor, you know, but we can't go ask them for that information. So it is worded funnily, but it's essentially if we don't hear back from a doctor.
I think you probably didn't read what that, because what if, what if I told the kid not to go back, and he wants to go back, and he says he's got all these answers, and now you're clearing him without examining him?
What, what line are you looking at?
Number four.
But it's that they have to.
Right, you're letting a PE teacher clear it.
Right, right, right. And then, and then you, as a medical advisor, are going to get a fax saying, you know, oh, the kid said he had no headache when I made him run or jump, and can he go back to practice? And you, without examining, would say yes. But what if the guy in Rhineland actually told the parents of the kid that he should not be, and that's why the kid didn't turn in the information? Your, your hands are tied because of HIPAA, and you can't get that information from that physician.
So this is for a situation, the, the student didn't see a doctor.
I think that's probably what we need to put, rather than saying if medical clearance or documentation from the provider is not received, if we say that.
Comma, if you don't see the doctor.
If, if that, if has not, if the person has not been evaluated by a medical provider and cleared, then we will follow this, rather than saying if we didn't receive it and for whatever reason, you know, I, I don't want to share my information.
The problem, probably, isn't.
Right, and, and you, you don't want to be the person who clears this kid, and something happens, and the parents come back and say, gee whiz, but my daughter up there in Tom, Arthur, Rhineland, very clearly told us the kid doesn't have, cannot go back for three months.
Well, exactly. The, the parents would then, I mean, the parents would provide that information. I mean, that would be, that's a very clear example of like, yeah, absolutely. But if, but I think the, yeah.
Well, if I can ask, Tom, in the need of this, probably isn't so much the people who are going to the doctor that don't wanna share information. It's maybe people that don't go do the follow-up, and then we have to put limits sometimes on when they're attending school and what homework they're getting and all of that kind of stuff. And so rather than have that, middle school as well, rather than have that stretch out to infinity, we're saying, can it be evaluated on our part? But it would be in those cases where we seem to not be getting cooperation on the follow-up appointment, and we are looking to bring closure to a situation. But I, I don't know, my experience that I've had, people say, I went to the doctor and I don't wanna share it. It's more of, maybe I can't pay for the bill, I don't wanna go back to the doctor for whatever reason, so I just don't remember bringing closure to this. That's when you might. And I'm guessing she doesn't just do that lightly. She's probably had conversation, you guys have probably had conversation with the families trying to bring closure to that.
Yeah, she'll try to contact people and want us to hear back from parents.
But I mean, if that would make you feel better to put that in there, that would be like, after the attempts to bring closure with the medical professional that she may intervene from, like that. We don't want somebody to usurp that role of the.
Right, that's, that's, that's how it's, the, the way I read it, that's how it looks to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is there, is there a specific kind of language that we wanna say the medical clearance is warranted? Or after?
If the, if the student fails to, fails to be seen, or fails to set up an evaluation with their provider and get the necessary medical clearance, then we will follow this. That way, you're, you're laying it very clear that you have advised the children to go get their testing done. They have refused and they have documented it. So if they, if they fail to do it in that reasonable timeframe, then we will follow this. Rather than saying if medical clearance is not obtained.
Yeah, I think, I think where we're getting confused, because if you look right above there, it says, the parent will be made, made aware if the medical clearance is not received from the, the physician within one week, the student will be reevaluated within the school setting. And then if that clearance from, you know, that they were supposed to provide is not received, so if, you know, essentially, if they didn't, you know, if they didn't make those efforts, then this is what we do. It, it really is so that.
And it says it there, but maybe it's just reiterating it just to cover our backs, is what you're.
That's, that's all I'm getting at.
Yeah. And, and, I mean, it's more work for Darlene and whoever, but in the end, it's.
But it's, it's, more or less, it's just you're putting it in words that, you know, your policy is saying clearly that if they fail to go see the provider and get the clearance, then we will do this. That's all you need to say, rather than if medical clearance is not obtained, or if we can't get the documents and, you, you cannot get the documents without their permission. There's the problem.
This way, it calls to the family in that.
So, yeah, if, if the, if the student and their, and or their family is unable to provide us with appropriate documentation of clearance from their provider, that I need fashion.
That sounds fine. And that, I don't think it, it changes the, the thrust of this, particularly.
No, definitely. It just probably says.
So would it be sufficient in that number four to just be able to say if, if medical clearance is supported documentation of evaluation by a medical provider is not received in accordance with number three, you know, or something like that, in, in order to make that link? Could we just say something like that, in accordance with?
Yeah.
You know, the protocols spell out number three, then she's gonna go do that. So that makes sense.
That does. Good.
Probably get all that.
Okay. So at this point, this is just the plan?
You keep your work on that.
Um, at some point, do we want to have this turned into a board policy? Or as far as the student portion of the policy?
Yeah, you know what we could look at? Maybe what we can look at is how could we incorporate that into costs that we have? But we'll look at that and bring that back to you.
Yeah, because I think, I think if we're gonna look at this from a standpoint, granted, we do the baseline testing and all the stuff for the athletes. Now we're taking it to the next step where we're doing it for the ones who are not necessarily athletes. And just to have all that placed is, is good. Excellent.
And does this have to be done more than once during their school years?
Wait, has this occurred?
Two years or three years?
You mean that when they go through that special protocol, how often do they go through that process?
Every fall.
Every fall.
Yeah, at the fall athletic.
Every student, every fall?
No, every student is gonna be going for athletics.
Only, only once.
They do the baseline testing at the fall athletic meeting. Heather, you're looking at me like a.
But, but if they have it in their ninth grade, do they have to have it again in 10, 11, 12?
Yes, every year.
What about the musical in the band?
I thought we maybe.
You hit by a travel.
Yeah, no, it's, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the WIAA really push for the concussion protocol every year? Okay. So we are good with the concussion protocol and? Let us jump on to item I, the 2018-2020 Anigo Hockey Association Agreement. Be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the 2018-2020 agreement with Anigo Hockey Association.
Second. Motion by Ms. Youski, second by Mr. Paya. The hockey agreement.
I was just curious who signed that for the hockey association. That signature was as good as mine.
You used to speak, Caleb McPhail, but I don't know if that's truly me.
The other thing I'd like to point out there is the hockey association over the last couple of years, I think the last three or four years, had an escalator similar to what you see presented tonight. And I think last year's expenditure was $95,000. Do you think that's gonna change?
Dale, from your standpoint, does the escalator seem reasonable?
If I were to be, I think it does. You know, we do have access to their bleachers for fiscal field that's included in the agreement. And I know the Blue Line Club rule covers a significant portion of the cost of keeping this program going.
Do I agree?
No, I mean, their, their booster clubs in general have done an excellent job of keeping athletics and other curriculums.
No argument there. The booster clubs in general have done an excellent job of keeping the athletics and other co-curriculars going strong in this school and community, so we appreciate that. Any other discussion on the agreement? Bobulus, do we call censors dollars as well?
Janie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Item J, new hires. Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following new hires, Shannon Mosher, regular education instruction assistant at East, and Jessica Turner, special education instruction assistant at North.
Second.
Motion from Dr. Deep, second from Ms. Youska. I think you've all had the opportunity to review their physician documents that were out there. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the hires, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who's opposed? Motion carries. Item K, resignations.
I move the board accept the resignation of Steve Kohler effective October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen.
All righty.
We have the shortest resignation letter I've ever seen.
Is there, I don't know, is there a way to learn more about this for situation? Is this something we can table and take into close session?
When I opened this up on Friday, I think when I got it from Bobby, I just feel like that there's something in this that I don't know about because of knowing Steve. There's something that's not sitting right with me to accept this. I can't accept it knowing that it is personal.
Because my history teaches, so he, he, did he retire from his former teaching? How long ago?
Nine, five years, five, six years ago before he.
So then he's been back as a special ed?
Instructional assistant.
I'd be interested in hearing Mr. Ari too.
I mean, I know that he's had some recent health issues, but I don't know.
Yeah.
I'd personally adopt off the steam about this, and will I? But I think there's something here. I caution the board that we have to be very, very careful of what we're discussing in open session, and there was a question raised about doing this in closed. Unless it's properly posted, that the board will be meeting in open session to go into closed session. We could not go into a closed session tonight to discuss it.
Right, so can we table action on this?
Can we table this? Well, there is a motion on the floor, so at this point, unless the motion is withdrawn.
I always wondered what happened if we voted no on one of these anyways. Does it really matter?
So, so if you say no today, or you withdraw the motion, if it does not show up for work, what do you do with it?
I'm sorry, I'm showing up for work.
Well, just, I'm, I'm trying to figure it out, but, I don't know.
Quite frankly, this is annoying to me, and I don't have the interest.
Well, that's, that's my question, you know, you, you put an action item on here, but if someone had concerns when this was, we received it, we didn't do due diligence and reaching out to find out why. If, if people have concerns, no, I, I don't know.
And Colleen, do you know, I, I was told once that the only difference it would make is if there was something that happened and it maybe came to a lawsuit or something like that. In terms of what, I don't know if I know your, I understand your question.
Oh, not accepting the.
Not accepting it?
Yeah, like that, that would be the only place where it might make a difference. There would really make a difference obviously if he's resigned, he can't stop that if someone resigns.
Right, right. If he is resigned, you can't stop.
Right.
I feel like it's hard to make this decision.
Hard to make the decision to accept that he says, I'm resigning from the district, or he is saying, I'm resigning from the district.
Yes, but I don't understand the circumstances that led to this, and I guess I feel like, and I didn't know how to address this either, you know, prior to, and you've got to watch what you say and everything like that, and so, I don't know, I feel like it, I feel a lot of respect for him in making this decision. I need to have more information.
So you can go into closed session, I, I can give you more information, but again, I would think he's resigned. So.
Could we accept the resignation?
You could accept it with regret. You can accept it and.
Can we hear the story next month at closed session? And it's still accepted here?
Bring you information.
That sounds good.
Oh, there is a motion on the floor to accept the resignation of Mr. Kohler effective October sixteenth. If the motion carries, Mike, do we still hear the story?
I can still bring you back.
I would, I would think yes, as, as long as, as we would announce that we could even do it in a closed session after a committee of the whole, as just an informational meeting only, or information to us only, that we're not going to be taking any formal action at that time, whether they're hearing the details that seem to be, whether it's the streets or everybody at this point. Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the resignation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Or no, so five-three? The noes would have come from Mr. Pyatt, myself, and Ms. Youska. But the motion does carry to accept their resignation. And we will put an agenda item on the, shall we do it ahead, committee of the whole? We will do a closed session at the next committee of the whole after the meeting, or we can go on a close to, for informational purposes. All right? Okay. Item L, donations.
I move the board accept the following donations, three thousand dollars from Justin Shuffler Memorial for Henigo baseball, a hundred dollars from Covente Spirit Union for Fellowship of Christian Athletes, two hundred and fifty dollars for Travel Adventures for Fellowship of Christian Athletes, seven hundred and fifty dollars from Hydrate Studying for Fellowship of Christian Athletes, thousand dollars from Hydrate Studying for Anigo Boys Soccer, three hundred and seventy-five dollars from Anigo Anthropology number six-six-two for Filla Backpack slash Filla Need Program. Total donations, five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. Motion from Dr. Deep, second from Mr. Pyatt. Any discussions on the donations? Other than saying we are extremely grateful to our community once again for stepping up and showing their support for activities that are going on in the district, and we truly appreciate each and every one of them. That being said, anybody else got anything to add? Bobulus, do we call?
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Youska? JD Schrader?
Yes.
Janie Long?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
And that concludes our business policy.
What is Fellowship of Christian Athletes?
Talk about that.
Tom, do you have? Should I shed some light on it?
They meet monthly, they feed outside of school day. We have a retired guidance counselor that was in that advisory position and worked here. And it's a national organization, we have a local chapter, and it's a faith-based, student-run group that supports athletes and other kids in various activities.